I'd like to call the March 2018 meeting of the Board of Education to order. First, an invocation, Ms. Heathridge?
Good evening. I would like us all to pause for a few moments of silence to pray for the lives of the children, faculty, and staff taken by the Cowardly Act at Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida on February 14th. I would also like to ask for continued prayers for three of our high school students that were involved in a horrific car accident mid-February. Thank you.
Okay, next, Principal Angel Lasher from WT Griggs Elementary School will introduce the student who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. I have with me Krista Bowser, and she's a 4th grade student at Griggs.
Would you all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the school spotlight this month is on WT Griggs, and I'll turn it back over to Angel Lasher, Principal.
Everybody can come on up. Good evening Chairman Dobney, Board members, and Superintendent Stefanik. Tonight, we are here to present our reading initiative that we started in November that we are super excited about. It's called Read Across the Rainbow, and I don't want to give too much information, I'll let them talk and then I can give some more, but it has been a huge hit at our school, and it has really ignited that fire again for wanting to read and wanting to read different genres of books.
Read Across the Rainbow is about, well, we get these kind of sorts of cards that have these categories that sometimes have books that we've never seen before, and it kind of helps kids that usually read more than one book, but they read like one sort of kind of book, but when they have this one card, it helps them learn more and have them read like more books than just one sort of kind of book. And what I like about Read Across the Rainbow is that it helps kids that only read one sort of book, that we can all learn more than just what's out there, we can learn more, like we can learn about the rainforest and stuff like that. And I've received some charms from this. I have received a soccer ball, a surfboard, and I have received an owl charm from this Read Across the Rainbow experience.
Hi, my name is Braylee Jenkins. Read Across the Rainbow is a fun thing we do at our school. Let me tell you about it. You get a card, and it has categories, and if you fill it out, you get a charm. So I have a Mickey Mouse charm, and you can only turn it in on Friday. You must have a guardian sign it, and if you fill it out, you must fill it out. I will be getting a charm tomorrow because I have worked so hard to fill out my card. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gabe Evans, and Read Across the Rainbow is technically something where you have a card, and as Callie said, it has categories on it. And as you fill out these categories, you get charms. And I have a charm, and I plan on getting a second tomorrow, and I really like this because I enjoy reading with my mom and my baby brother.
Can you read to them some of the categories?
I have read The Human Body, Chronicles of Evantia, and tons of other good books.
Hi, my name is Krista Bowser, and I like Read Across the Rainbow because it is a program that inspires kids to read more books. Some of the books that I've read are Wonder, Thirty-Nine Clues, and I Survived the American Revolution. The charms that I have received are an owl watermelon and Pittsburgh Steelers football charm. And some of the categories I have on my green card is a book about electricity and magnetism, a mystery book, and tell about how you solve the problem, and something in the past.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Saunders. I think Read Across the Rainbow is a great program to help kids give the incentive to want to read. I enjoy achieving the goals that are set each month. In return, we are rewarded with charms. A few I have selected are things that I enjoy. One in particular is a volleyball charm. I play parkour and rec volleyball and really enjoy it. Thank you.
We'll have a quick PowerPoint. Mrs. Parker went to a professional development a while back and saw this program and thought it would be a great thing to use at Griggs. We knew that we wanted to get more parents involved in reading at Griggs, so we decided to go in and implement this program. And as you can see, I think it's really, really working. We're tracking the data in hopes to see a correlation between our reading sports and this program. We're all good.
So that was our kickoff. We started with a school-wide assembly. I read a Pete the Cat book. I dress like Pete the Cat, and then we had students up there that helped us with the repetition part of the book. And we started that way, I think November 13th. So we did an assembly during the day to kick it off, and then we had everybody come out that evening for Title I night, and we had the best turnout we've had in the five years I've been there. We had over eighty families come out, so it was a great night. There's some pictures of that night.
We're also collecting data and sharing it on a wall with the kids. So we're looking at how many books we're reading. We're totaling up every Friday. How many books each class is reading, how many cards have been turned in overall, kids turning their red card. There is no time limit, so we still have kids who are working on their red card, working on their orange card, they have as long as they take to do this. And then we have incentives for the children when they hit certain marks. One of the incentives was extremely fun for the kids to see. Does anybody want to share what they got?
Well, when we reach 500,000 books, we had Ms. Lasher and Mr. Goines dressed up in tutus, and when we reach 7,000 books, we are going to have a pajama day at school. And when we reach 10,000 books, we are going to Silly String the Principals and Miss Forehand.
This is a picture of some of the kids filling out their cards. A lot of the teachers having their notebooks, how we are going home nightly, coming back. The teachers are participating, reading books, you know, different books than they normally would have in class to make sure that the kids can fill them out, and then also doing their home piece. And here's another photo of the kids getting to charm shop on Friday. And then we have a short video for you two.
Hi Avery, what's Read Across the Rainbow?
You read across the rainbow because you want to read in school.
That's great. Why do you like Read Across the Rainbow?
Because you can get charms.
Yeah? Where do you find the books for Read Across the Rainbow?
In the library.
What's your favorite charm?
The Pokemon.
What's your favorite book that you've read?
Um, Pigeon.
Does your teacher help you with Read Across the Rainbow?
No.
No. Do you read at home with mommy and daddy?
Yes, and I read in my classroom.
That's great.
Read Across the Rainbow is like you read this paper, and you write all the books you down on that paper, what it says to do.
Then what happens?
Um, when it's time to turn it in, you get a charm.
Mm-hmm. What charms do you have?
Uh, I have a cross, um...
And why do you like Read Across the Rainbow?
Because it makes me better at reading.
Why, what else do you like about it?
Because you can get charms.
What kind of charms?
Um, like fun ones.
Like fun ones? What's your favorite charm?
The watermelon.
That is delicious. What's your favorite book?
Um, mommy.
Mm-hmm. Where do you get the books?
Um, from my house.
What kind of books have you read for Read Across the Rainbow?
I have read Time for Bed.
You have? What's your favorite charm?
My favorite charm is the snowflake.
So basically, the students start out with a red card, orange, yellow, green, going across the rainbow. They have to have it for a month, so we date it when they get the card, and they have thirty days that, and then they can take longer than that, but they can't turn it in beforehand, and that's just to help with making sure the books are actually being read. And then they turn it in, and their first one, who has one they can show? Can you go up there and show them, Callie? They get this carabiner, and then there's lots and lots of charms that they can choose from. You can take it up there and show them. So as they fill out each card, then they get to choose a charm. And it has been a huge hit so far. We've read close to 7,000 books just since November, and we really hope to continue this for quite a while, so.
Sounds like they're enjoying the nonfiction genre, which is normally not the case for young people.
Yes.
So with the charms, for every book, it has the charms that go along with that book, or they get to choose any charm?
They can choose any charm. We charm shop on Fridays, and there's posters with all the charms available, and they just, once they fill their card up, they can come, they tell what number they want, and we give them the charm.
What grade spans does this cover?
K-5.
K-5?
Is it expensive with the charms?
Well, not, not so far. It's been okay so far. Would you say?
Yeah, we knew that this startup would, you know, be a bit more costly, but it would be something that would be easier to make.
Oh, yeah.
You can find it.
Yes.
From China. Good job.
Before you sit down, have each student come up, say their name loud and clear, and what grade they're in.
My name is Callie, and I am in 3rd grade.
My name is Braylee, and I'm in 3rd grade.
My name is Gabe, and I am 3rd grade.
My name is Krista, and I'm in 4th grade.
Okay, Krista, wait just a minute. You read a book about the Pittsburgh Steelers?
Um, no, I have a charm.
A charm for the Pittsburgh Steelers?
Somebody had to choose that charm.
I'm Kaylee, and I'm in 4th grade.
Great. Thank you all very much. You did a really good job.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I have one question, if you would.
Yes, sir.
Did you say that you've read 7,000 books thus far?
Close to, and I think as of Friday, we were at 6,700?
Six, yeah, I think the rainbow said sixty-eight on the chart.
Sixty-eight.
And did someone indicate that when y'all get to 10,000 books, that y'all were going to throw ice cream at someone?
Silly string.
Oh, silly string.
Silly string, not ice cream.
Well, could you keep me informed when that happens?
Absolutely.
I'd like to see that.
You almost gave away our big one. We haven't told them yet.
I thought it was ice cream.
Ms. Lasher and the Griggs family, any competition you have that could get Mr. Goines and a tutu and with a tiara, every benchmark, you could probably put that in as an extra. That would be worth it, I think.
You're going to take that picture out, right? I'm like, no.
That's great. Once again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda's approved. Next, school safety presentation from one of our student board members, Jenna Akers. And before you begin, Jenna, I have a note that I'd like to read, and this is from Bobby Hannig, Chairman of the Currituck County Commissioners. Says, "I'm unable to attend this Thursday because I already have a previous engagement. I was hoping to get us together so we could discuss any funding that may be needed. I strongly believe this is an issue we should all be involved in." And signed Bobby Hannig, Chairman of the County Commissioners. Jenna?
Good evening, Board. Superintendent Stefanik, so for those of you who don't know me, my name is Jenna Akers, and I'm a senior at Currituck County High School. And as my two-year term on the Currituck County School Board comes to an end, and I'm preparing to start the next chapter of my life away at college, I would like to leave a lasting impact on this school system that I have grown up in. I can only think about all decisions I will need to make in the next couple of years, but unfortunately, many students in our country will never have this opportunity. Just recently, many lives were lost and countless lives affected in Florida that leave us all asking why. Why are our students not safe in our schools? Unfortunately, there's many reasons why we will continue to see these tragedies in schools. But tonight, I want to present with you my vision to make every classroom safer with a small device that can be deployed in mere seconds to make classrooms more secure until law enforcement arrives on the scene. So standing here with me tonight is Chief Matt Deputy Biker. So Chief Biker has over twenty-one years of law enforcement experience. Chief Biker is a firearms instructor, a SWAT instructor, and a rapid deployment instructor. I asked Chief Biker to work with me on this project because there is no one more qualified than him, and he graciously agreed to work with me in order to make this vision a reality for Currituck County schools.
Good evening. Again, my name is Matt Biker. I'm the chief deputy with the Sheriff's Office. Jenna asked me to help her with her presentation because I am an active shooter, rapid deployment instructor, and I participate in the crisis training with each school every year. So she's put together a great presentation, and just maybe help and give her a little insight.
Thank you. So I've given you each a copy of my presentation, but hopefully it'll appear on the screen. All right, so just some overview. The 21st century has seen over 211 school shootings. One hundred forty-eight of these shootings have taken place since the beginning of 2010. And since 2010, 139 have been killed and 229 have been wounded, and this includes adults, children, and the shooters. And most of these are due to increased cases in depression, mental illness, and cyberbullying. So some of the solutions for school shootings is increased active shooter training, which takes place in our schools every year, school resource officers, which we have in all of our secondary schools, camera systems outside to detect threats before they enter the building, as well we have camera systems, locked doors and buzzers for opening access to visitors. And like I said, we have most of these to some extent in most of our schools. But time is the most critical aspect we must address in these tragedies. The average school shooting lasts twelve and a half minutes, and the average response time from law enforcement is eighteen minutes. Obviously, rural areas affect this response time. So one solution we haven't mentioned is creating valuable minutes that law enforcement needs to respond and eliminate the threat. So most school doors contain glass or other locking devices that can be easily defeated to gain entry. If a shooter has a specific target, he will focus on that room. If we can make that room almost impossible to enter, then the shooter may give up and flee, or waste time that is valuable to let officers arrive on the scene. If a shooter has random targets, they will wander around testing doors and again waste time that our officers need to get into the building. So the question is, how do we make our classrooms and offices next to impossible to enter? And here's my solution. This is called Night Lock Lockdown. Here's a picture of what it looks like. So basically, it drills into the floor and to the bottom of the door, and the red thing is called a handle that slides into place. It works for either inward or outward swinging doors, and is anchored securely to the floor and uses the strength of the floor itself to provide protection. So here are the different floorplay options. On this one, I have installed right here, I have the lower profile one. So it's really easy to use. Its locking handle can be stored in a convenient location in the classroom by the teacher. A wall box is provided with each unit and can be positioned anywhere in the room for quick access to the handle in case of a lockdown event. The handle is red for easy visual locating. Most schools prefer positioning near the door at the teacher's desk. An easy-to-use unlocking tool is included for accidental lockouts. So some of the benefits of this device, it simply adds safety to any existing door. It can withstand tremendous force. Both style locking handles come with a supplied wall box. There's no need to replace existing hardware. This is a one-time solution, so once we install them in our schools, there's no need to ever do it again. It happens in mere seconds and is easy to install. So the means to purchase, the kits will be approximately fifty dollars each, and purchased in bulk with extra installation purposes. And after counting the doors, we need about 575 devices throughout the schools, and at a cost of fifty dollars per device plus shipping, there's also an estimated cost of fifteen dollars per installation. So the total proposal is around thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars, and that would too include our four hundred dollar shipping fee. So before I take questions, I'm going to show a quick video, and then I'm going to show you a quick tutorial on how this is used.
Night Lock Lockdown, Door Barricade for Emergency Lockdowns. Night Lock Lockdown is a fast, simple, and affordable way to secure a classroom. With everything included for installation, our barricade allows a teacher to immediately lock down the door from the inside of a classroom, eliminating exposure during a hostile intruder situation. The Night Lock Lockdown can withstand tremendous force to stop an assailant, allowing enough time for police to respond. Get Night Lock Lockdown, the number one emergency lockdown solution.
So there's also another YouTube video that I, not showing you due to time, but it's about a ten-minute video, and it shows you about how impossible to get the door open is. I think it took them over like a hundred sledgehammer hits just to get the door open, and that was just by breaking the lock on the door. But I'm going to show you how it works. I had it installed on some two-by-fours. So this box right here would be installed next to the door, so it opens. Take this out, this is the handle. It slides into place. Can't get it open. So now I will take any questions or comments.
Now, does that a fifteen-dollar installation fee, is that paid for when you pay for the lock, or do we do that?
They actually offer their own installation fee, but that is around fifty dollars a door, but after talking to Matt Mullins, who I believe is our head of management, gave me that quota.
Oh, okay. Great. Other comments?
I just would like to commend you, Jenna, on taking the time in this presentation of your time and your concern for Currituck County students is commendable, and we have to have it.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, I'd be in favor, whatever we need to do in order to have these installed at every door in every classroom in Currituck County.
And I've actually been working on this project since summer. I knew I wanted to give back to the county in some way, and it just now has become a super relevant issue with the tragedies that have recently happened across the nation. But like you said, I think it's very important because there is no price you can put on lives.
That's exactly right.
I'd like to commend you too, Jenna, and I think that's a very good start for us to start looking at. I've, I called Dr. Dobney earlier, and, you know, I've had a lot of phone calls from parents, like I'm sure everybody has, and I'd really like to see us establish like a safety task force or something with members of the community. I know we've got a fellow that works for the Department of State who said he'd be glad to help. We've got a former FBI man that would help. I know Matt Biker would be more than willing to help, and, you know, look at all the possibilities. On the elementary level, I don't know how this is going to work with so many kids going in and out for pullouts, you know?
As long as you get them in a classroom that has it, because that's the way they do it.
Right, but I'm saying just going in and out all day.
Well, that doesn't affect them. You would only use this in a lockdown.
But it only happens when you have a lockdown.
So during a lockdown, the...
Only for lockdown, if there's an intruder.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's when you would almost get into that box and get the device.
Yes, ma'am, and so the procedure is, is that teachers would open the door, call any students that are in the hallway, usher them into their classroom, they lock their door, they slip this in, make sure their student's in their correct place in the classroom. And then like for certain schools, like I know at Moak Elementary School in their kindergarten building, they have, they go into the bathrooms, so this would be on their bathroom door, actually. And then for accidental lockouts, the company provides a free lockout kit to every office. So if a student, there was ever an incident and a student were to use this, the offices would be able to open the door.
I misunderstood you. I was thinking it would replace those little doorstops that we have, you know, and just use these every day instead, but for the active, I think that would be a great idea. Great idea.
I do too. I've thought about everything and thought about metal detectors, but I think in a case such as somebody storming in, the metal detector's not going to help us. But something like this, if we could, when the lockdown happens and all the teachers could just...
Yes, ma'am, and if you research some of these school shootings, one of the biggest issues is that they're in the hallways, teachers aren't closing their door, everyone's rushing, so this can be happen in seconds. That way, everyone's safe and securely locked in a room.
I think too, definitely, you know, I know Matt Biker has been around and done his training for a long, long time. I think we need to make sure that happens every year, you know, with every school, and I think we've got a couple of schools that maybe are not up to date at the time. I know you go the minute they call you to do that training.
They are all currently up to date. Actually, House School Ninety-seven went into effect March 2017. That requires every school in the state to train the law enforcement agency in that jurisdiction. We've been doing it since 2002.
Every year, every school? Because I had a school tell me just today that they had not had the training this year.
The only one that has not had it this year is the high school, but we made arrangements today. That is the only school left that hasn't had it this year. But every year, it is conducted.
I appreciate your presentation. I'm concerned about the fact that I attend a lot of functions that aren't normal to the regular day, and there's a lot of people that come and go throughout the building and they don't always have to check in at the front, okay? Tons of people, and I understand what you're describing, but I'd be more, I'm not against this. I'm into, I'd like to have a discussion about it, but I think I'd be more interested in knowing if we could be alerted as to a weapon coming into the campus, and maybe we could have a set of metal detectors and then an automatic locking door set within so many feet. That way, the gun never gets into the building.
Yes.
And then all the other doors aren't accessible. I'm not saying that this isn't a deterrent, but they don't seem to have a problem getting into the court buildings.
This would just be a quick, easy solution rather than going through the infrastructure of our buildings, but...
I think we have to go through a lot of infrastructure. I think we put metal detectors at the main entrance, and we put another set of doors in that automatically lock when the metal detector goes off, therefore they can't...
But the metal detectors have to be manned.
No, they wouldn't, because they'd have an automatic system where the secondary door set would lock if it went off.
The only issue you have there is that most of our buildings, especially I know in my school, is that there's at least twenty exterior doors. I mean, half our classrooms have exterior doors, so it would be difficult to do everything... I mean, half our classrooms have exterior doors, so it would be difficult to do everything. And if a school shooter really wanted to enter our school, he would figure it out. So, if you ever go and watch one of the school shooter active situations that they present, they're going to get into the school somehow if that's their mentality. So, this would be something that could just happen in seconds that would secure, hopefully, almost every single student in the building.
Yes, ma'am.
But I agree with you, I think it is also a good idea.
I think it's a good start, I certainly do.
Well, some of the other...
I'm sorry, Bill, you've counted every door.
We have an estimation.
Okay, even like at the front, so if we could get to the, all the front doors and secure those, we would have people in place with the drills of who's going where.
Not initially, you don't want to put them on exterior doors just because it could cause other problems, but, I mean, that definitely could be considered when we are thinking about this.
Going, going in, I'm talking about inside, like the front, like I was at this middle school earlier tonight with all the doors. So, they would have something in place for all of those to go and lock down.
Yes, ma'am.
You've accounted for those.
Yes, offices and classrooms.
Offices, teachers, the staff rooms. A lot of bathrooms, because like in the elementary schools, not necessarily every classroom has a door. So, most of their lockdown drills account for them going to the bathrooms, so the bathrooms will have it. So, not necessarily a classroom door, but...
Okay, good.
Well, some of the other things that we're considering is a card swipe system, like for JP Knapp Early College High School, where the teacher would have, the door's automatically locked, but the teacher would have to swipe the card in order to get into that building. You want to tell a little more about that, Mark?
Yeah, the card swipe systems basically just replace keys. And so, when you have a locking, you know, system, it's, it looks almost like a credit card and you either swipe it or some of them have chips in them. And so, you just pass it close to the locking device and then the door opens. Those, there's different prices for those, but we have an estimate, Matt, about thirty thousand per building?
Yes.
So, you know, there's expense there, but it is a system where the doors automatically just lock. There's no pulling out the keys or... Yes, yeah. And even some of them, if you have some of the newer systems, you can keep the card in your pocket and you don't have to take it out and the system will read the chip from even that far away. And so, if teachers are walking with the students, then the doors open and as everybody gets in, it just locks right behind them.
I did visit some of each level of schools this week and I was checking to see, are the doors locked with that little doorstop there ready to shut tight? And there, most were, but some were not. And I did find one classroom with students that did not have a lockable door at all. So, I think we need to definitely investigate all of our doors.
Which would probably be done if we were going to purchase this, something that we'd go ahead and...
Well, we've already started extra safety reviews and safety procedures in the district and discussions about, you know, what areas do we see that need to be addressed and possibly enhanced.
And practice the lockdown drill. You know, I heard from some teachers that they had not had one this year. And we used to have at least one every year and, you know, I know the year is still young, but...
Right, it's a mandate still that you have one, at least one every year.
One, right.
And we, yeah, we told the principals that, you know, don't stick with minimums. Make sure, especially with the little ones, that you're doing it several times so that they don't really have to think if it actually comes to pass. And they've practiced it enough times that they know the signals and they can just take care of themselves and get into lockdown positions.
Well, another thing that I would like to consider, such as our neighbors to the south, Dare County, every one of their schools has a school resource officer. We have, well, we split one between the two high schools, correct?
Right, we have three for the district, one at each middle school, one at Currituck High School, and the Currituck High School SRO is also in charge of that.
So, that would mean an additional seven school resource officers and that's something that we would have to talk about to see if we could get the funding, you know, for it.
And I have a question about that. I know that, and Matt Biker might be able to help us with it, but I know in the summer, with the influx of tourists, we have to put extra deputies over on the outer banks. But in the off-season, is there some way we could use those deputies from Memorial Day to Labor Day, or Labor Day to Memorial Day, at our schools?
Those, we don't hire extra deputies, we use existing deputies...
Right.
...to work there. We could have an overtime fund that would allow those deputies to work in the schools. We could attempt to do that.
I just know they're not as busy over there in the winter months as they are in the summer. You probably have to have more over there in the winter. I just wondered if we could take them and have them over at our schools?
It's definitely an option to look at. And there's several plans, we are actually working on several plans. There's some options that have become available to North Carolina Sheriff's General Statues that have allowed us to get a volunteer force that we could train, that would go through an academy that the sheriff would put on and allow people, if they were qualified, to volunteer. And, you know, what you're saying about some of the officers, that if we didn't need as much manpower as we do in the summer, that we could use other places, that is definitely a possibility.
Something I'd like us to check into is see if there's any grants out there for school safety programs. And that'd be worth checking into. Probably with the current circumstances that faces the nation, there's probably some funds available for that, for school safety. So, I'd like to check into that if possible.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I'd like to ask Mr. Biker if you have suggestions as to what we could do better and if you think that the device here, Night Lock Lockdown, is a reasonable approach, or should we be thinking in addition to that?
It is a great device, but I think whatever device the school board, the county, the community decided on, we need to be tested and evaluated. Other many devices out there, this is a very good one. I think that we should test them, evaluate them, see what the pros, the cons are of each one, but this is a great start. This is an excellent start. The schools are training, they contact me and I attend every lockdown. We do the tabletop exercise every year, we've been doing them for years. And then, when it became state law, we've been ahead of the curve for at least a decade, if not longer. But yeah, more training, the teachers, the principals, the faculty and staff take this very seriously. They contact me and they set this up, we arrange it. We, every time we have a lockdown, we do an evaluation and I report back to the principals any deficiencies that we find, any concerns that we find. And then, for the next lockdown, we hope we've improved on that.
Well, one of the things that we ask Sheriff Johnson to do, which she did do, was to have deputies occasionally do their paperwork in the school parking lots just to have that visibility of the sheriff.
I think that's happening, because I see that frequently.
Yeah, they're required to do walkthroughs every day in each school, multiple walkthroughs, unless there's some extraordinary reason that they could not. And occasionally, there are days like that, but most days, they're there in the mornings, midday, and when the buses are getting out, and that's a high priority for us.
I see them out there.
I've seen a really good presence.
And one thing great about this device, and I think the card swipe system is a great option, but I think you need something in addition to that, because if you had a student that was going to do this during the middle of the day, obviously, they're already in the building. So, you would need something within the building to prevent that student from getting around the building easily. So, not something just on exterior doors, but I think if you want to increase safety within the building, if they're already in the building, then you need something on classroom doors as well.
I agree. The card swipe system is more of an automatic locking system for the outside doors, but you have to, if somebody does get on the inside, you have to have some inside protections as well. I agree.
I'll be interested in both.
Another thing we're also working on...
The ideas.
Yeah.
Look at everything.
For like a nap and the high school and Moyoc Elementary.
Right, those that have outside...
Yeah, a number of different like campuses.
We also checked with Paul O'Brien, our director of technology, and we were looking at the possibility of our camera systems being linked to a system that the sheriff's deputies could also man in real time. And he's had conversations with Deputy Biker already and it looks like it's an easy transition. And so, we're going to actually get that system set up. And so, then, everything that's seen on our cameras at the schools will be able to be seen at the sheriff's office in real time.
Right. And that was one of the problems at Parkland, you ever seen delayed time videos?
Yeah.
That's really not very effective at all.
So, back to you, Mr. Biker. When you say it needs to be tested, you're saying we should maybe get one or two, try them out before we spend thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand dollars?
Yes, this brand and maybe a couple others. There's a lot out there.
Yes, sir.
And this is one of the best that I've seen. But when you make a commitment like that, you want to make sure you got the best product for your money. So, but this is very good, but I would test and evaluate it to make sure that it is what we hope it will be.
Yes, sir.
One of the other things that I saw, it was a high school in Indiana and they call it the red line drill. And I'll have to demonstrate that. Hey, Matt, could you close this story here?
In this school in Indiana, they did, they had an active shooter come in, they locked the door from the inside, but they also had a red line that went across the floor, because if the shooter's on the outside trying to shoot inside, there's an area in the classroom that the shooter cannot see, the door's locked. And so, there would be a red line kind of going through this area, because shooting this way, they cannot see the students. And that's what they call the red line drill. And they turned desks over, get behind those students for extra caution. That's another thing I'd like us to consider. All they would do is take some pain, strip them off.
Yeah.
Well, we would also need to change the majority of their locks, because the majority of them do not lock from the inside.
That's why we're considering this right here.
Yeah.
So...
I would ask that we have a little bit more discussion and at least see what other products and other tools are available. I'm not saying, you know, wait a year, but by golly, I would hope that we wouldn't buy thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of equipment right now, not knowing that it's the best that we could have.
Well, and I think those companies that are selling them would be more than graciously happy to send us examples.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we establish a Safe School Task Force to consider what Jenna has presented to us and any other ideas that we can implement. I think we need to do something.
Jenna, would you be willing to be on that?
Yes. Students, parents, administrators, teachers...
All I'm asking of the board this evening is to start a conversation about this issue, because it definitely needs to be addressed and needs to be addressed alongside the county commissioners and county manager.
But I think time is of the essence.
Yes.
It's one of those things, I don't want it to drag on for long.
Yes, ma'am.
I want something done.
I want to see this vision become a reality, especially before I leave the county for a while.
Well, and we just...
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to make sure that we have some... I'd like not only parents and students and teachers and obviously, Mr. Biker, I trust his training, but I think we should get some other input from other specialists and they should be part of this group. I'm not a, I'm not a door lock specialist, and I don't think any of you are. So, I would ask that we find someone else that has a non-bias, that isn't necessarily linked to a company, not suggesting that anybody here is, but...
Yeah, but the motion is just for a task force, right, at this point?
And I'd like them to be included on the task force.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
We have Stuart Wall, who works for the Department of State, and he has agreed to help us in any way, whether it's on the task force or just come and talk with us. And the same with David Griggs, who was with the FBI. And I know our sheriff's department would do all they could and I agree with Mr. Krotick in having just varied...
Okay, there's some, being a former superintendent, there's some cautions that you have to take on a committee like this. And Mr. Spontick, you want to tell them more?
I was just inhaling, you know, to say the same type of thing. The actual safety or crisis plan that is out there is not for public knowledge, front page to back page, because I don't think that any of our parents would, you know, cause us any harm, but if any of that information got out, there would be some people that would attempt to get around some of the protections that are in that safety plan. So, we just have to make sure when we do the invites that most of it is law enforcement, safety personnel and staff and general community and even, you know, students. The information can't go too far, otherwise the plan isn't as protective as it could be if it was more of a confidential document.
But certainly, we could get together and get ideas.
Oh, the task force is a great idea. Again, conversations have already started in administration and we're working with maintenance on things about different locking systems and things like that. But these types of devices, you know, considering those coming in, you know, the card, you know, pass system for the doors, sometimes, you know, there's human error with keys. You know, you open something and if you don't turn the key the right way, then now the door isn't locked, it's unlocked. And so, with these card pass systems, you walk in and it locks and the mechanical device, you know, doesn't forget. You know, it keeps the door in a locked position. And so, all those things that we talk about, any little glitches, you know, that may show up in our current system, we're trying to close those.
And also, when we have substitute teachers in, they don't have a key.
Sure.
And oftentimes, someone will go and let them in the classroom, they're subbing in, but, you know, all of those things need to be, because chances are, if something terrible were to happen, we'd have substitutes somewhere.
Right, yeah. All the protocols just need to be reviewed and make sure that if there's any holes there that we fill them in. But the idea of a task force for more minds, you know, can produce, you know, more ideas, that's a good idea. I was just talking about the composition of the committee.
Well, you know, if we, if this motion does pass, I would like it to happen sooner rather than later. I agree with Karen, you know, we don't need to take a lot of time to do that.
Wait, we don't need to wait.
Even though, you know, we do need to be thorough doing it. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Jenna's only got, what, about three months? So, I got to use her while she's here, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to form a community task force to consider other safety options. Do I have them?
Yeah, we did.
Happy motion and a second.
Any other discussion?
More discussion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes?
And I do have to say that the task, well, the group that you formed on the anti-bullying, that did happen really quickly. You started having meetings on that, which is great, and so, I'm sure this will as well.
Jenna, thank you again.
Yes.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
We very much appreciate it.
Lot of work, Jenna, good job.
Thank you, Mr. Biker.
I happen to be a superintendent here in Currituck when Columbine happened, so I know, you know, what we're going through right now. And I'm just glad that we have many more options now than what we had back then. Okay, did anybody sign up for the public comment session?
No, that's...
Okay. Next item, student board member reports. Jenna Tyler, Colin and Kealan. Jenna, you get to talk again.
Thank you, board. So, from Moyoc Middle, Sean Slade chairs. What we do, how we speak, and what opportunities provide our staff, students, and communities all affect the climate of our school. Moyoc Middle School agrees with Mr. Slade and we are working hard to create a climate of opportunities. Better club inductions were held on Tuesday, February twentieth. This club currently includes seven new members and recognizes students who received a ninety-five percent average in the previous year. Forty-two young members were inducted that night. It was a wonderful evening celebrating students' success. The winner's sports athletics ceremony was Thursday, February twenty-second. Cheerleaders, wrestling team members, and girls and boys basketball players were honored for their sportsmanship, commitment, and play during the season. Our cheerleaders earned a third-place trophy at the conference cheerleading competition that was held on Saturday, February seventeenth. The science Olympia team of thirty-eight students competed Saturday, February twenty-fourth at East Carolina University. Out of eighteen teams, the varsity team placed fifth overall. The JV team came in second place out of five teams. Our team also took home the Spirit Award, which recognizes the team that demonstrates the best sportsmanship, kindness, and a positive attitude. MLS has won this award the last three years and we are most proud of this award. FFA hosted Spirit Week and students had a grand time dressing as their favorite Disney character, dressing as life down on the form, and wearing the colors blue and gold that gold that represent FFA. From Moyoc Elementary, MES just wrapped up its first ever Booster Thon Fun Run event, a physical fitness and character education program all in one. Proceeds made from this fundraiser will be used to enhance our students' learning through technology and STEM tools. February has been an all-around adventure at Moyoc Elementary. One full of Derby Cars, Valentine's Day, Bus Driver Appreciation Week, and our awards celebration. The fifth grade Derby Car competition was a hit, taking home third, sixth, and seventh place. Our teams are now prepping for the district Battle of the Books competition and the regional Math 24 event occurring this Tuesday, March 6th, in the MES gym. From Central Elementary, Central Elementary is getting excited to kick off a month of literacy. North Carolina is coming to read to our students. Throughout the month of March, students will participate building the enchanted forest by reading books at home and sharing their titles in the forest. Our culminating event will be March 27th, where we will gather for a rural night of reading that will begin with tea in the courtyard and end with the Bright Star theatrical performance of Upcycled Cinderella. And with that, I turn it over to Kealan.
Thank you, Jenna. So, next up, we have Griggs Elementary. Griggs students had a great time at the honor roll and awesome behavior celebration held after school last Friday. We will be celebrating Read Across America tomorrow with several community guest readers. Thank you to all who are coming out to read to our students. We are looking forward to the Math 24 tournament. Go Mallards. We, we will be hosting a Title I STEM night. Let's Taco About STEM on Thursday, March 22nd, from 5:00 to 6:30. Our three, our three-to-five music program will immediately follow the activities. We will have a school-wide assembly called Upcycled Cinderella on March 27th. Thank you to PTO for sponsoring this event for us. Then, Knott's Island Elementary. Lots of activity around Knott's Island Elementary. The third through fifth grades held Colonial Day gathering for the rest of the school. Ginger Clark shared, shared her books and her story in becoming an author with the school. The students showed off their physical skills in a PE showcase. Students have been decorating the halls and will be dressing up, dressing as their favorite book character for Read Across America. The kindergarteners will be participating in all kids swim this coming week at the YMCA. Math 24 is on March 6th, and the first, first graders will be meeting their Jarvisburg pen pals on the 7th. Students will be looking sharp for spring pictures on the 21st. Twenty-first. And with that, I pass it on to Tyler.
Thank you, Kealan. Tonight, I will be covering Jarvisburg Elementary, Currituck County Middle School, and Currituck High. From Jarvisburg, it has been a few, busy few weeks at JES. We launched our school-wide reading initiative with K-2 and 3 through 5 students. Teachers will use the next month to read aloud The World According to Humphrey, to K-2 kiddos, and The True Story of Jack and the Beanstalk through 3 through 5 students. Weekly challenges are being issued to students that encourage creative thinking, problem solving, and writing books, and writing based on the two books. JES hosted Wild About Reading Night on February 21st. Ginger Clark spoke to families about her role as an author, and grades 3 through 5 students participated in our first in-house field trip from the Jeanette Peer Grant we received in January. Students studied wind energy and built wind turbines. It was a lot of fun for everyone. We also hosted our Leader of the Month luncheon and Sunday party to congratulate students for being outstanding role models and citizens. Stop in for a visit to see all the great things happening at JES. From Currituck County Middle, things are moving along in a positive direction at CCMS. Our students recently participated in a nine-week Attitude Reward. We had an awesome day of dancing, game showing, and recreational activities in the gym. We also had five kids participate at the chess championship this past weekend. All students had at least one win. Our teachers continue to work hard during PLCs. This month, this month, our weekly PLCs have focused on reading professional journal articles, followed by a collegial discussion on topics such as mental health in schools. Very sorry, I lost my pace. Building relationships and standards-based grading. We also started our new after-school book study, book study on the book When Kids Can't Read: What Teachers Can Do by Kylene Beers. We have nineteen teachers participating. Each week, they, they are reading about a strategy that helps products become better reader, becomes, that helps students become better readers and have to try it out in their classroom and reflect. Finally, the CCMS cheer team won first place at the AAC cheerleading competition. Go Raiders. Finally, from Currituck County High, Currituck County High School is excited to begin our spring sports schedule. Come out and check out a match with our boys tennis, girls soccer, softball, baseball, and outdoor track. We are beginning our course registration with all students, including upcoming freshmen. Please take advantage of the course fair on March 7th. We will hold a COA dual enrollment meeting on March 5th at 6:00 PM. Our science Olympia team competed last Saturday, February 24th at ECSU, or ECU. They placed third overall and qualified for states at NC State. And with that, I turn it over to Colin.
Hello, board. I will be presenting Shawboro Elementary and JP Napoli College. Shawboro Fernand Families, sorry, showed our school amazing support of our Booster Thon fundraiser program. Not only did we raise money to use in our school, the kids learned invaluable character-building lessons and participated in an adrenaline-pumping fun run. It was an overall success, and we can't wait to participate again next year. Our fifth graders had a great time participating in the Derby Race. Thank you to our fifth grade teachers, Ms. Sandy Reynolds and Pastor Vic for working so hard to make this event a great learning experience for our kids. Last week, we held our book fair for students and families to purchase books for home. This week is Read Across America Week. Each day, we have participated in a spirit day to encourage reading. Our Title I team hosted a Dr. Seuss Family Reading Night this past Tuesday. Thank you to all the families that came out to support our school and read, and read with your child. We received a grant from Currituck Kids to order We Read books. These books allow the parents to read on one side and the students the other, creating family reading opportunities. Shawboro also hosted AIG Night on February 22nd. Coming up this month, our kindergarten students will participate in community helper presentations. Our fifth, our fourth and fifth grade students will travel on March 6th to the Math 24 competition at MES. From JP Nap, tomorrow finishes up our ACT Blitz Week preparations, preparations for the ACT test, which will be given next Tuesday, March 6th. Tomorrow, Friday, March 2nd, is also the last day for students to apply to be considered for next year's freshman class. Student interviews will be conducted at both middle schools during the week of March 19th, and acceptance letters will be sent out on March 30th. COA math midterm exams for JP Nap students will be given in the media center on Wednesday, March 7th. Thursday, March 8th, is the end of our third quarter grading period. FBLA will attend the state conference in Greensboro the week of March 18th. Parent conferences and report card distribution will be on March 20th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. The JP Nap cafeteria will host Parents Lunch Day on Thursday, March 29th from 11:00 to 1:00. All parents are invited to come out and eat lunch with their Spartan students. And that is all we have for our school spotlight today.
Great. Thank you, Jenna Tyler, Colin, and Kealan. Next item on the agenda, CTE support letters. And at the last school board meeting, I mentioned that during President Trump's State of the Union address, he made the statements, let's invest in job training that we need so badly. Let's open great vocational schools so our future workers can learn a craft and realize their full potential. And I had organized some committees about a year ago to try to expand our CTE program here in the Northeast. And so, I thought it would be an opportune time to send letters to President Trump, Betsy DeVos, the Secretary of Education, Mark Johnson, our state superintendent, and Becky Taylor, who is our state board representative, you know, in support of, you know, CTE vocational programs. And we now have the final letters ready to send to those people. And I'd like to call Renee Doughty up and have her go over those letters.
Good evening, Dr. Domney, members of the board, Mr. Stefanic. You should have before you copies of both letters. Again, at the request of the last board meeting, we did draft some letters, had a couple of revisions. And what you have before you are the final copies, willing your approval to send off. The first letter we'll address is the one to Superintendent Mark Johnson. He is the North Carolina State Superintendent for Public Schools. If you will follow along with me in that letter. Currituck County Schools has long been proud of its robust career technical education program. Offering programs such as agriculture, auto mechanics, carpentry, marketing, foods, and health science, to name a few, has afforded students opportunities to experience potential career pathways prior to graduation. Instructors in these CTE courses more often than not come into teaching directly from industry. Having walked the walk in the field, they bring such rich experiences into the classroom to share with their students. Each of the career and technical education courses are hands-on experiential courses. Students learn by doing. This engagement is a catalyst for keeping students in school as opposed to dropping out. The misconception has long been that these courses are for those who can't cut it in the more rigorous academic classes. Currituck County Schools is adamant that this is not the case. Career and technical education courses provide academic experiences for students that are rigorous and, most importantly, relevant. The skill sets and credentials obtained by students in these programs have a direct impact on their ability to enter post-secondary academic opportunities or the workforce. Currituck County Schools was encouraged by the survey recently distributed from your office seeking input about post-secondary options for students in North Carolina. We stand firmly behind our belief that there is no one-size-fits-all model for student success as modeled with our state's present graduation track. A student who chooses to complete a vocational pathway and enter the workforce deserves as much celebration as those who choose to enter a four-year university pathway. We hope that feedback from your survey will foster discussion about diploma track options that will open opportunities for all students to demonstrate success in a more personalized pathway. Frustration mounts when administrators, counselors, student, and students together make course enrollment decisions that personalize a student's pathway to graduation, and in doing so, are penalized to the state's accountability model for not meeting math rigor, as an example. A high school student who expresses interest in a vocational trade such as electrical systems technology must attain four math credits to graduate high school to include one course beyond Math III. However, the program requirements at the local community college indicate that the highest level of math required is Math 110, Mathematical Measurement and Literacy. We thank you for seeking input from those whom you serve. We look forward to further dialogue and potential policy changes that will help all of North Carolina's students find success, be it through a vocational pathway or a college prep pathway. We extend an invitation to meet with you or to have you visit Currituck County Schools and continue discourse about personalizing education for all of our students. The second letter that was drafted, was directed directly to President Trump with a copy to Betsy DeVos, of course, Secretary of Education. Dear President Trump, Currituck County Schools was encouraged by your message emphasizing vocational training in the State of the Union address on January 30th, 2018. We stand firmly behind our belief that there is no one-size-fits-all model for student success. A student who chooses to complete a vocational pathway and enter the workforce deserves as much celebration as those who choose to enter a four-year university pathway. We too see the value in opening great vocational schools so our future workers can learn a craft and realize their full potential. Currituck County is poised to foster discussion at the state level about diploma track options that open opportunities for students to demonstrate success in a much more personalized pathway. The misconception has long been that these courses are for those students who can't cut it in the more rigorous academic classes. We are adamant that this is not the case. Career and technical education courses provide academic experiences that are rigorous and, most importantly, relevant for students. The skill sets and credentials obtained by these students in these programs have a direct impact on their ability to enter post-high school academic opportunities and the workforce. Perkins funding is a critical resource for strengthening and expanding our vocational programs of study. Since vocational training is an objective of yours, we would be willing to pilot new pathways of study in our traditional schools and pilot a new innovative vocational school design. An increase in federal Perkins money is necessary if we're able to make this happen. Thank you for recognizing the importance of students not just being college-ready, but career-ready. We look forward to further dialogue and potential policy change that will help all of North Carolina's and our nation's students find success, be it through a vocational pathway or the college prep pathway.
Thank you, Ms. Doughty. Do I have a motion for approval of both these?
Should I move?
Second.
Have a motion and seconds or any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to have some discussion. Is it my understanding, Ms. Doughty, what you're saying here in the first letter to Mark Johnson in the bottom of the first page, that students that would choose a vocational track would be penalized by having to meet more math?
A student's not penalized.
Excuse me. They would be required under the current such, current diploma. You're saying that they're required more math than is necessary to go on to one of these trades? Is that, is that what I'm understanding here?
They're not required to, they're all required to take four maths in high school. That can be Math 1, Math 2, Math 3, a pre-calc, a trig, an AFM, calculus, whatever the case may be.
Right.
It also could look like Math 1, Math 2, Carp 1, and Carp 2. If I let a kid take Carp 1 and Carp 2 as a high school student, because that's what they want to do, and that's the math rigor that best fits their personalized track, the school takes a penalty for that student not completing Math 3.
Well, so then what you're saying is the misconception is that they aren't as rigorous in math. If what you're saying would be true, because you said there's a misconception somewhere in here that it wouldn't be meeting as rigorous of courses, but yet you're telling me they wouldn't be required to take as much math. Is that?
So, I think the difference is what that student's success, the accessibility to that math curriculum is, as well as their potential. I work with kids one-on-one. When we talk about pathways, what they require for an HVAC license, an electrical license, looks way different than what AFM, Advanced Functions in Miling, and Discrete Math look like.
Yes, ma'am. I understand that. I would just point out.
I don't think one's more rigorous than the other.
I would just point out the fact that what we're talking about here is allowing students, the intent of this letter is to allow students to take less math than is required in order to go down a vocational track.
Not true.
Not less math. It's a different type of math.
Different math.
Different math. And yes, sir, I do it right. I did it as high school principal for four years.
Right.
I met with kids individually, looked at paths, and then we made a decision that's best for that student.
So, are we trying to have not just CTE classes available, but are we trying to have a vocational school? Is that what we're attempting to do here? Because I'm a little perplexed.
No, I think that what we're talking about in this letter is there's lots of opportunities out there that we can explore for all students. I'd much rather figure out if I can keep a student engaged in some type of vocational programming, whether that's a program or a school or a different model, an innovative high school like JP Nap, and it means they graduate with some type of credential, then it's worth exploring.
I agree. I, I agree.
Well, you know, the fact is, going back to the one-size-fits-all diploma, twenty-five percent of our students go to a four-year college. There's probably, let's say, sixteen, seventeen percent that actually finish. So, every one of the students that graduates from Currituck has to meet the standards to go to UNC Chapel Hill, which not everybody needs to go or wants to go. And we've lost, I don't know how many kids that drop out because they don't want to take those upper maths or they can't be successful.
Right.
And, you know, going back to what I've, you know, mentioned before, our planning department says we're going to have 200 to 250 housing starts a year for the next twenty years. So, why not try to get our students, you know, some meaningful credential in HVAC, plumbing, electrical, masonry, something like that, where they could actually stay in the county? Because it used to be, you know, back when I first came here, they said students studied the three hours, reading, writing, and the road to Norfolk, because they would not stay here because there was nothing here for them to do. Now that we do have something, let's give them the opportunity to have a meaningful, you know, vocation and stay here and be a protective member of our county. And it also helps the county out.
So, what we're asking is to give the students a choice.
Yeah, well, back in 2009, they had different tracks.
Right. I remember.
And most of the time when we went through school, I, I mean, I'm venturing to guess if you can recall back to those days, there wasn't a one-size. In Virginia, there's In Virginia, there's still not a one-size-fits-all model. There are four different diploma tracks for students to enter. I don't think those students are any less smart or more smart than ours. I think that they've looked at it as a model to say, how do we meet the individual students' need? And the rigor still has to be there, whether you're going through a vocational pathway or you're going through an academic four-year university-bound pathway. It's really about the rigor and making sure that students can define some sort of success. We lose them when we can't help them to define success, and it gets frustrating, and then they throw their hands up and they say, never mind, I'll go get a GED and then I'll take the welding classes and I'll get a certificate and I'll walk on about my way. And it's frustrating. I mean, I walk that walk every day with kids as I'm meeting with them and talking about what do they want to do. I see the grades plummet and I'm trying to intervene, and what can we do to help? I don't--
And we're delaying that success two or three years because they quit, they go to get a job, they go do the GED, and then they still have to go to this class that we would be able to start. We could have offered and gotten through to them, and they graduate with their class and be ready to get a job.
Well, again, I'm a believer in personalization, and then there's no one-size. I mean, I haven't met a kid between Jenna and Kealan that's sitting there. They're two very different people, and even though they're both ambitious young people, they still have different needs. And so when we talk about students and we work with students, it's really about recognizing we already have an OCS diploma. We recognize that there are students that can't access the general curriculum for that diploma. So again, it's about personalization and making sure that kids are able to find some sort of success in a high school track. And if they're going to go be welders, that's great. That is absolutely an acceptable profession. If they're going to be plumbers, fantastic. They will probably make more than I do, sitting in my current chair. That's just the reality of it. And I just want to be able to keep a hold of them and not lose them. Again, and not everybody drops out simply because they don't want to take Math 3. That's not -- I'm not saying that either. There's lots of different reasons. But I just think that being able to identify that students can have lots of variety of successes throughout programs, and many of you have kids that have gone through some of those vocational programs. I never did. I played a numbers game when I was in high school. I was an academic person bound four-year degree. I never explored an opportunity because it would hurt me. That's silly. I mean, I look back at now and think, geez, that was really silly. I could have been a nurse. Who knows if I'd have taken a health science class because it's maybe something I had an interest in, I may go on to be a doctor. But I played a numbers game and stayed away from those courses because I didn't want to hurt my GPA.
Right.
First of all, when I went over and toured a lot of the CTE classes, I saw people that were going on to be nurses. In fact, we're offering that now. And I saw people that were welding and automotive and a lot of other things that I might not be able to bring the words right to second. And I'm very supportive of those type of courses. In fact, I have a lot of experience in a lot of things you just said. Do I have a certificate in every one of them? No. Do I work on my hands every day? Yes. Do I understand what it takes to be a holder of one of those master licenses and the amount of math that's required in order to do it? I think I could probably have a pretty good idea. So I just don't understand if we're already offering CTE courses as electives and they're already engaged their path. I want them to have a sound education in mathematics and the English language and history and science, personally.
But aren't all those classes that--
So I asked for my name to be included in these letters as opposing them. I did, in the email. And I don't see that in here because if we're going to start a vocational school, that's one thing, in my opinion. But I think everybody in Currituck County deserves a high level of service, and I think we are providing a lot of choice right now. And I think that -- I think you took in quite honestly what Donald Trump referred to out of context. But after we vote, and they vote four to one to send this letter on, we'll find out. But that's my opinion.
Duly noted.
If they're taking carpentry, 1, 2, as a credit, I'm all for keeping our kids in school. If their passion is in another field, whatever it takes for them to explore those options for a career pathway, I am all for it.
I agree. And am I correct that the standards, the classes that they have to take for the class -- for these classes are the same with the exception of the fact that one of the maths is not going to be calculus or trigonometry or whatever? It's going to be a math that would be more beneficial to them in the area that they're in?
Right. So we take a hit in the accountability model when a student doesn't make it through Math 3 and chooses what they call the substitution route. As a principal, we are allowed certain substitution routes for students past Math 2. And so if a kid can't make it through -- let's say, I've got kids that have taken it three times and can't pass it. And so then they go into a Carp 1, take Carp 1, and it's a math substitution. Currituck County High School takes a penalty for that student not meeting what they call math rigor.
And so this lowers us with their test scores and saying where we are? How does the penalty affect us?
The school report card where we look at math rigor--
Okay.
--we still are below the 95% threshold for math rigor--
I see.
--because we allow those substitutions.
How to explain, so when someone looks at that report card--
Right.
--they don't think we're doing our job? And it's not that. It's not that the kids aren't learning. It's because of the credits.
Is this affecting us getting accreditation?
It's one of the prongs of accreditation process, yes. It is one of the factors that are inside.
Virginia does have those four tracks. I know, I talked to Connie just the other day. She works for another system, and they have four tracks and have had.
Well, let me ask, Will, so what -- I'm trying to understand what you're saying. You would rather have a student required to take the four higher-level, I don't know if that's the right term, higher-level math classes and flunk out and get discouraged and say, and up and quit and say, this isn't for me? Get his GED, then specialize in a trade.
No, I think that's an assumption that is mistaken. What I'd prefer to do is figure out why a lot of these kids aren't able to perform and taking it three times and figure out why they're not able to get it on the third time--
I was wondering--
--and figure out how we can better serve them--
Everybody.
--other than giving them something that isn't as rigorous. That's what I would prefer to see happen.
Well, I was one of them, though. I was one of those kids.
I want to understand why they're taking it three times and they didn't get it by then. Not all of them.
But I think it's the same thing. When we were in school, and I don't mean to take up so much time, but what maths did you take when you were in high school? Do you remember?
Yeah.
What'd you take?
Algebra 1, Algebra 2, geometry, trigonometry--
I was not the math star.
That's right. So Algebra 1 and geometry and Algebra 2 are now what make up Math 1 and Math 2?
That's right. That's your--
So that's what most kids make it through in a traditional high school track: Math 1 and Math 2, because that's your Algebra 1, geometry, Algebra 2. So it's really not any different. It's just, it's different because the accountability models changed for us. And again, I'm about rigor. I want kids to achieve as high as they potentially can, but I don't like being penalized when I do what's best for kids and then it comes out on the other end that we take a hit for it. Because at the end of the day, not everybody's made for a pre-calculus, an AFM, or a discrete math. They're not.
Well, and this is another piece where sometimes the research, you know, is forgotten. Research in K through 12 talks about the best way to teach students is to make it relevant to them. Any content area, not just math. And so if a student is going to go into HVAC systems and there are math requirements for that, they have a passion for that, they're going to attend better to that kind of math than to some nebulous Math 3 that doesn't have anything to do with the systems they're going into. And so same thing with carpentry. I think carpentry is an easier one, that people can see the math, you know, connections there with all, you know, the angles and the measurements and things like that. You can make a math curriculum out of that, and if you put it side by side with Math 3, I'm not sure that there would be a higher or lower. It's just a different way to attack math, if you will.
May I comment really quickly?
Yes, please.
Just a comment on what Mr. Kotic said. There are just some students that just cannot comprehend math and never will, to be honest. And it's better to have a system that's going to fit all students rather than letting students slip through the cracks. And I remember when I interviewed for the board, I said one of the best things I liked about this county is that we don't let students slip through the cracks. And I think this would be a better opportunity to not let students slip through the cracks and give them more opportunities to find a path that best fits their needs.
I'd like to say, look, first of all, I don't want to let any students slip through the cracks, and if anybody feels like that, they're sadly mistaken. What I'm trying to do is understand why we are performing very low in a lot of schools in math and why our proficiencies going in the sixth grade and the ninth grade are less than 50%. And now we're coming back and we're saying, well, the kids can't do the math. We're going to let them do this. I don't want to -- I want to figure out why we're not performing at all the levels of grades, not just in the high school. Yes, ma'am.
How about math books?
I agree. I've been talking about it for five years.
Well, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
Yes, ma'am. Some resources, I agree.
Absolutely.
So anyhow, yes, ma'am, I won't take up any more of your time. You know where I'm at with it.
Could I add one final comment?
Sure.
You mentioned that we need to get to the issue of why our county specifically is having such trouble with math, but I think the problem's a little bit bigger than our county. If we look at North Carolina math scores, they aren't as high compared to other states. So maybe we could look at the trends from our state compared to others and might be able to get a better picture of maybe why our math, our students aren't performing as well as math as the rest of the country.
Well, to add on to that, we also need to look and see what we're doing in math compared to the other counties in the state. And we're probably still towards the top, aren't we, in math?
I don't have the math breakdown, but I've got the whole grade span breakdown of all the tests together, and we're still in the top 20% of the whole state in overall grades.
Because I could sit here and make a test that every county in the state would not pass. You know, anybody that teaches math knows that. I taught math for a number of years. So going back to my feelings here, I think we're doing the kids a disservice if we don't provide for their needs. And I think to cater to the top 16%, which is what we're doing or what the state is doing, you know, is doing a disservice to our kids. So why not make it more meaningful for them? Give them an opportunity to have a meaningful vocational track, something that, you know, they can survive on through their life. Another thing with vocational education, you're not going to have all the student debt as a college student would. They come out, they have a, you know, license, they're going to make a meaningful wage and not have the debt that most college students do. Any other discussion? Okay, I have a motion of second to approve these letters. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next item, Currituck County Schools' calendar options. Superintendent Stefanik?
Last month, we were still working on calendar options for this school year, but as we approached the spring of this year, it's time to start looking at the master calendar for next school year. And we put together a couple of draft options. We'll explain these options to the board this evening, and we can call it a first reading, if you want to use policy language for that. And then we want to send the options out to our staffs and our administration and get input from the entire county. And we'll also put them on our website, and we can get input from families as well. Option 1, to give the readers digest version, it's pretty much a redo of this year's calendar, which was pretty much a redo of last year's calendar, because with the laws that the state puts over top of calendar development, there's really not a lot of flexibility. We have a certain start date that we're not allowed to start before. We have a certain end date, and we're not allowed to end after that without a waiver from the state. And then you have to fit all of the mandates for calendar development inside of those bookended dates. And so these drafts were created by Dr. Lutz, Ms. Doughty, and myself, and they're just starting points. Again, option 1 has pretty much all the same components that this year's calendar has in it. And it would create roughly 1,050 hours, which would give us four days of time over the state minimum for weather conditions and any other situation that might cause us to close school. Calendar option 2, the difference in calendar option 2 is except for the big holiday months, we tried to involve the middle schools and the elementary schools in the Friday afternoon in-service option every other Friday in a month, not each Friday of the month. And again, we have to make sure we get instructional hours in according to the state mandate. And so we have, in most months, a second and fourth or a first and third, you know, option in there for early release for professional development and school improvement activities by the staff members. In that one, we have 1,032 hours, which only gives us about one day of makeup time, but if we put a provision in that if anything happens in a month, one of those early release days disappears and you get to make up half of the full day if it's missed. Or if it's a fog delay or something like that, then you make up the whole two hours or three hours, whatever we had for the delay. And it, again, creates some professional development and PLC, school improvement, time in the elementaries and the middle schools, which is what we heard about after Ms. Doughty made her presentation about the high school pilot this year.
And the reason for the early release on Wednesdays in option 1?
That's the one-per-month early release option that we have now.
Do they still do professional development?
Yes, yeah, oh, yeah, same reasons. Professional development, and we will probably split those up. Some of those might be building level, but if we have some common professional development needs throughout the county, there might be some countywide activities going on in those early release days as well. Another idea that has come up from teachers and some administrators, this second semester, we put in 10 minutes extra on the school day to make up time during, you know, because of weather situations this year. There was a suggestion that if we modify the school days countywide for the whole year, 10 minutes turns into basically 1,800 extra instructional minutes for the year, which is 30 hours. And so if we put that in as we develop the calendars for next year, then you pretty much have enough buffer room that if we have another weather year like this one or something even a little bit worse, you wouldn't have to worry about makeup time because you'd start the year off somewhere in the 1,070, 1,080 hours, and then you have to maintain 1,025 for the year when all is said and done. So that would just be something, if you just started with those schedules modified by 10 minutes, you would actually build in the extra instructional time right from the start.
Were we going to look at the possibility of maybe adding, you know, minutes to each day so that we could finish the first semester before Christmas?
That is a conversation that's out there. It has been a nice debate topic in some other school districts. Ms. Doughty, is it Rocky Mount?
Rocky Mount.
Nash Rocky Mount that has approved it? They just adopted it. And what it would do is it would add more than 10 minutes, you know, to each school day. But what turns out is you end up with a, we'll call it a lopsided year. The first semester ends up with about, just about 80 days, and then the second semester would end up with 90-plus. And so some folks see that as, for semester classes, if you have those, that it's an imbalance if somebody takes the class in the second semester over the first semester. But even with those 80 days with the extra minutes, you still get the equivalent minutes that you would get in an 87- to 90-day schedule now.
Well, typically, well, for the past few years anyway, we've not had, the weather delays have been after. Well, typically, well, for the past few years anyway, we've not had, the weather delays have been after, have been like in the, if we had, semester had ended before Christmas, then we wouldn't have had an issue. Those bad weather days have been after Christmas.
Yeah, except for, except for two years ago.
Yeah.
Uh, two years ago, we had the tropical storm backed up by the hurricane in October, and so we missed most of our days then.
Change it, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would really hurt that kind of schedule.
Yeah.
I'm all for that, but I think the, I think the easier way to get to that is if the state would, uh, allow calendar flexibility and then you could back up into, uh, the middle of August to start rather than very late in August that we're mandated to start now.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, having taught elementary before and I have two former elementary teachers, would you rather have early release on a Friday to do staff development or on a Wednesday?
I would probably be more productive on a Wednesday.
Yeah, but I see the, I don't know, I don't see how we do two Wednesdays. I mean, I like the idea of them having the two opportunities, two monthly opportunities for staff development. I don't know if I'd want to put two Wednesdays in the middle of the week.
And we do need to think about the, um, high school.
Continuity.
If they're on Friday and parents, you know, it is nice if parents are going to use that to do a little long weekend somewhere. They would probably prefer the Fridays.
Yeah.
We, we did, we did float that out there.
It's a match.
And we, we did float that out there and, um, did, did we check with CCHS too, Ms. Doughty? I know I had the conversation with Mr. Bassnight. Did, did you have a conversation down there?
In the teacher's advisory, your superintendent's advisory council, we talked to them about the high school representative, about switching the Fridays to Wednesdays across the board, um, because again, you know, more productive on a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Day, less likely for students to just not come on a Friday, which again, attendance, we've been monitoring that whole time and it's not been an issue that, oh my goodness, everybody leaves on Fridays and nobody shows up. Um, but Wednesday would be something they would be willing to consider if the district wanted to move to Wednesdays. It's a typical rotation.
Yeah, and Mr. Bassnight, Mr. Bassnight said the same thing. That, uh, that the, the day, the day of the week isn't the big thing, it's the having the time to do the work is the big thing.
Absolutely. The high school, the, you know, I think we need to be on the same page with it.
Yeah, for families.
I agree. So again, the, the, the proposal is put these out there, get input. Um, yesterday in our, yesterday in our newsletter, uh, we actually sent out a blank, uh, calendar, uh, except for the holidays. And if people wanted to do a, a little experiment on their own, uh, and try to, uh, count school days and, and early release days and things like that.
It's not easy.
Thank you very much.
Uh, I, I suggest doing it in pencil, uh, you know, because, uh, you're gonna have a lot of revisions if you're gonna try that. But, uh, and so any input that comes from the community or any of the schools, uh, we'll give that all and we'll have that for the board, uh, at the next meeting.
Can you tell me, is the twenty-seventh of August, is that the earliest that we can just start school, which is when we're starting it?
Correct.
Yes, the way the law reads, um, it's the Monday closest to the twenty, twenty-sixth, I think.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, it's that and not the end, it's the, the last day closest to the eleventh.
Yeah.
Uh, June eleventh and, and you can't go past the eleventh. Of June.
Alright. I, I just, a lot of parents, um, have, you know, jobs. So, early release, a whole bunch of early release is kinda, puts a real hardship on trying to keep a job for a lot of working parents. And then they have to coordinate childcare, which takes away from their disposable income, if you will. I would just say that if we could try to limit these early release days, not only because I feel like half of something is not as good as a whole for education value, but I think you get a twofer. I think you get a little higher level of service and you provide some consistency to the family unit. And I think those things are important, particularly because we're in a very rural area and a lot of people do have to unfortunately still, even now, travel into Virginia to work. So it makes a, it makes an undue hardship. I just really wish that we would take that into consideration.
Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll offer to the board too, that, uh, I worked in another district and in order to make this, um, type of schedule work, um, the district, um, undertook, uh, childcare options and offered childcare options to the families. Uh, and then, uh, the students had activities, uh, at school, uh, they were monitored by, uh, uh, school personnel and then you ran, uh, a later wave of buses, uh, for those families. And so if that would be, uh, something that would help, uh, we could investigate that as well.
So you're gonna send these out for teacher input and bring them back for next meeting?
And, and community too. Uh, they'll be out on the website and on our, on our Facebook page.
Okay, uh, next item, first reading of policy seventy-four ten, teacher contracts.
Thank you, Dr. Domny. Typically, the, the teacher contract policy has, has just been set, um, you know, by the state. And, um, this year, um, they're providing, uh, local boards of education, uh, some options, uh, for, um, teacher contracts. Uh, there are four options, um, in the, the contract language here. Uh, and it even says that local boards are, um, you know, uh, able to come up with, uh, even their own outside of these four options if they so choose. As a region, um, the, the superintendents got together and, and felt that if districts were more alike than different, then it wouldn't become another source of, uh, competition, uh, you know, for teachers as they, um, they, uh, compare one district to another. Uh, and, uh, when they did that, um, option two, um, on the, the policy was the one that, uh, came up. And it mirrors, uh, other levels, uh, of educators. In the first three years, you're on a one-year contract and that's the way it is now, that, that's not to change. But then after the, the one-year contracts, um, if, um, you have, uh, uh, quality evaluations and, uh, everything's in order, then your fourth contract would be a two-year contract. Everything goes fine in that two-year contract, then your contracts after that are four-year contracts. Um, and so, that is moving towards the multi-year contract, uh, piece. And I, I believe it, it came up because, um, you know, the state took away the, uh, the tenure law, uh, for teachers and this is a way to give multi-year contracts to your quality veteran teachers. And so the multi-year option was the one that, uh, was most suggested by the regional, uh, superintendents group.
Is it pretty close to being unanimous, or?
Yes. Now again, superintendents go back and make your recommendation to their boards and it is a, a local board decision. So how the decisions come out, you know, region-wide, you have to wait for the board votes, uh, you know, to come up. And this is something else that, uh, we'd be willing to send out to the teachers, uh, and see what their thoughts are about, uh, about the four options.
True.
I have a couple of questions and that was one of them, you know, have we had, got teacher input? But what happens if a teacher doesn't agree with the contract length that they've been given? Is there a route that they can go or is it just, this is what you get and that's it?
Meaning appeal?
Yeah.
I, I would have to look at that. I, I, I need, I guess I need an example. Um, if you finish your third year and you were going from a one-year contract to a two-year contract, I think that would be a positive. Uh, so I don't know why they would disagree with that length of, of contract.
So you'd be looking at five years before you could get a four-year contract?
Your four-year contract, right.
Well. Five years to evaluate and have good evaluations and that kind of thing.
So say you, they do qualify for a four-year contract, they've been there long enough, but you only give them a two-year contract?
Not with option two, that's not, that's not. If their evaluations are in order and, and everything is in order, that after your two-year contract, you go to a four-year contract? There's another option in here and I think it's option four. That, that causes a teacher to have, um, an, uh...
Rolling extended.
Yeah, not, not just proficient or higher, but it causes them to have, uh, an accomplished rating, uh, on an evaluation in order to be eligible for a four-year contract. Um, the, uh, um, the, that gets into, uh, almost like a merit pay type of, uh, of setup. And so this one is proficient, uh, or accomplished, uh, or distinguished. Those teachers are, uh, uh, doing the job that they're supposed to do and so they go from one year to two-year to four-year. And, uh, there's, there's less subjectivity in this and it's more data-based.
Are there questions?
But this is first reading.
First read, first read.
He's gonna solicit input from the, uh, teachers.
Right, and you guys can provide input, uh, to me individually, uh, throughout the month and then we can, uh, see which option, uh, seems to be, uh, the one that, uh, folks are most comfortable with.
Okay.
I, I just got a quick question, um, actually two. So we're required now by law to revise the contract?
The contract policy, yes.
Policy?
Yes.
And the red that I'm seeing all throughout versus the green, which, I'm seeing some text in red and some text in green. What's the?
The, the, the red, tho- those are changes, um, that have occurred at the North Carolina School Boards Association level. Um, or where it says Currituck County Schools Board of Education, they had a parenthetical piece where it said, insert local board of education. Um, this is, was in draft form, uh, even when it came out as a suggested policy. And, uh, there were some conversations at the state level and so the national, or the state school boards association was revising it, um, as more conversations were happening at the state. And so, this is their recommended template as of now.
So the green is their input as well? As I'm seeing.
Yes, okay, I see the green now. I see the green, yes, yes. Anything that's not black is a revision at some point.
So what's the difference, why didn't they do it all in one color?
This is the working copy.
Okay.
This is what they call a working copy and what we go back, if you go through and you can make it all the same color and you can get rid of the underlying sections and things, then that's when, that's what'll come out as your actual policy.
I get that, okay, so it started out in black and now I'm seeing red and I'm also seeing green. So I'm seeing three colors. I'm trying to decipher as to what the green means versus the red. I did, is this like their, they did one markup in red and then they did another markup in green? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, yes, and they, they consider this now to be, um, the best suggested, uh, uh, policy template that they have to offer to local boards.
Anything else? Okay, bring that, back that, uh, information next meeting. Okay, next item, uh, field trip request. Superintendent Stefanik?
As you can see, again, we've had, um, activities, uh, in, uh, in various, uh, sports. We had, uh, um, a regional orchestra, um, activity, uh, in Pinehurst. I would think our golf team would go there, but the orchestra was there, uh, in Pinehurst, uh, for that activity. We have, um, uh, the annual welding camp, uh, that happens down in Jacksonville, Florida. And my understanding of that is after folks attend that camp, um, they have an option, uh, or a chance, uh, to win a scholarship, uh, to the, uh, to the program that, uh, runs that camp down in Jacksonville. And it's a, um, you know, it's a, a high-quality, uh, nationally-recognized, uh, welding program down there. Uh, and I believe last year, Ms. Doughty, we had a recipient, uh, of the scholarship, uh, for that welding camp.
Did she get the full ride?
She did. Each student gets five hundred for this occasion in the, uh, program.
Yeah, good.
Last year we had a full scholarship out of that.
Hats off to our teacher who drove, I think, fourteen hours each way.
Yes, yes.
To get the students there over a course of three days.
Yes, yeah, it's a, it's a quick trip, uh, down and back, uh, for the camp and, uh, but the, it, it's a quality program. Everything I've heard about it is, is top-notch.
I see Mr. Beaumont back there. Didn't your son participate in that?
He did.
Did he really enjoy it? Did he get a lot from him?
He, uh, it was, it was a very good experience. He forgot a magnet.
Oh.
(laughing).
Okay. Alright, uh, next item, consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, we have to come up with a different date for our next board meeting in April because of, uh, the vacation week. Possibilities would be April eleventh, seventeenth, eighteenth, or nineteenth.
Okay, I'm, I missed something here. I thought that vacation week was after the eighth, because Easter is the eighth, correct? I mean, I got my calendar out a while ago. Is that right? Easter is the eighth?
Easter's the first.
Easter is the first? Oh my, okay. I looked at the Orthodox Easter. (laughing). That's the other one.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay, uh, April eleventh would be a Wednesday, is that correct, Yvette?
Yes.
And we, you know that that's open. I would almost hate to wait till the seventeenth, eighteenth, or nineteenth because of...
Because we'd be so close to, yeah. Uh, it's fine with me.
Is there anybody has a conflict with the eleventh or?
The only option would be to move it up to maybe Thursday, the twenty-ninth of March. Is it? Either one's fine with, uh, whatever.
I'd like to do that.
The twenty-ninth of March?
Is the, uh, room available? Is that a Wednesday too?
Thursday.
Uh, it's a Thursday.
That'd be what, the fourth Thursday?
The fourth Thursday.
Fifth.
I'll have to check because the fourth Thursday, the, um, economic development.
But that's the fifth Thursday in March.
That might be available.
Okay.
I'll check.
Could you check and then get back with us?
And if not, March twenty-ninth, then April the eleventh?
Eleventh, yep. Is everybody okay with that?
Either one of us.
It's twenty-ninth and April eleventh?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, information items, we'll have to wait and see when our next work session's going to be, either March or April. Same with the, uh, Board of Ed meeting. Next item, uh, board member and superintendent comments. I'll start with Superintendent Stefanik.
Thank you, Dr. Domny. I'll, I'll pass this evening. Uh, we had, uh, you know, busy week and, uh, a lot of, uh, stuff on the board agenda. Oh, for the board members, um, you'll be getting, um, relatively mid-year, um, school improvement reports, um, you know, from, uh, all the schools. The five of them this month and, and five of them next month. And so you'll be able to see, uh, the progress that the schools have made on their goals. Um, and for the community, we're monitoring wind speeds, uh, for tomorrow. And, uh, if we, uh, see that the wind speed is gonna be unsafe for our buses, uh, to be out on the roads, then, uh, we might have to, um, modify, uh, the school schedule for tomorrow. We'll try to get the message out as quickly as possible.
Mr. Kratic?
Well, um, I, um, would like to say that I had a real good time down in, uh, it was Jarvisburg Elementary School, attending the Wax Museum and saw, um, a lot of really, um, well-prepared students that, uh, were dressed, uh, like the person that they were supposed to be. And they were taking a line of questioning and telling you all about it. And it was a really good time. Um, also coincidentally, tonight, got a little thank you note, uh, here, uh, from, um, Max, Daria. And, uh, they're in, uh, Ms. Helfen's class. I'd like to take, tell them thank you very much. I'd also ask that, uh, you keep in your prayers, um, the three, um, students that were in that tragic accident. Very, um, very horrific, tragic. I believe their names are Mimi, Jimmy, and Jonathan. And I'd ask you keep them in their, in their, in your prayers. And, um, I would, uh, ask that, God bless Currituck County. And, um, thank you very much.
Ms. Rose?
I too would ask that you, um, do what you can to help Jonathan, Mimi, and Jimmy. There are GoFundMe accounts that have been started. There's a meal train that's been started for, um, Jonathan's family. He is, according to his mother, faces being in intensive care for a very long time. And as Mr. Kratic said, prayers for the family. as Mr. Kratic said, prayers for the families and the children. I'd like to invite everybody out to the hunter safety competition that will take place this Saturday at our high school at the shooting range, beginning at nine. Supposed to have six schools here. And the CCHS Athletic Booster Club needs some help manning the concession stand. I'm working on a schedule for that for spring events, so if you can help, please contact me, and that's all I have.
Ms. Southridge?
Yes, same sentiments for Jarvisburg Elementary. Every year, they just blow me away with their talent, with the kids' talent, with the Wax Museum. I too received a letter from Alexander Sharp. He said, Dear Ms. Southridge, I'd like to thank you for taking the time in your schedule to visit our Wax Museum at our school, Jarvisburg Elementary School. I hope you enjoyed our presentations and hard work. We are so glad you came. Have a great day. Bye. Sincerely, Alexander Sharp, Mrs. Williams class. Great to receive a letter. I'm a advocate of personal notes. My daughter and son and younger daughter will tell you that. They're like, Mom, you're the only one that writes thank you notes anymore. But lots of things happening in the county. I urge you to go out and get involved if you're not involved already. Please keep our kids in your prayers, the kids that were involved in the accident. They need your prayers, they need your support. Prayers and monetary support as well with the GoFundMe. Thank you.
Ms. Krap?
I also echo my fellow board members with our keeping the families and the kids in your prayers. I visited all of our schools this week, at least, or this month, at least once. The Wax Museum was wonderful. What those 4th and 5th grade students learned can't be measured in a test score. It was, it was, it was great. I went to the Derby Race for all the 5th grades in the county, and that gym was packed, it was loud, and they were having a great time. I attended the award ceremonies for Shawbar Elementary School for 3rd, 4th, and 5th, and I went to Knott's Islands Awards, and then one of the basketball games where we presented rings for the golf team. So, it's a great, it's great. Currituck's doing great things.
Thank you. Before I mention what I did, I'd like to request that the board email any recommendations you have for the school safety committee and that to Superintendent Stefanik, so we can get that organized as soon as possible. This last month, I visited Currituck County Middle School, Currituck County High School, attended the first meeting of the bullying committee that I organized, and Ms. Rose was there too. For the first time ever, Superintendent Stefanik and I met with a Currituck County lobbyist in Raleigh, and they requested how do we think they could save, we could save money? And so, we gave them, what, about five, six different suggestions on money-saving ideas that if legislation passed, you know, we could get it. And one, just real quickly, one of them was to try to include Knott's Island Elementary on the isolated school list. I attended Jarvisburg Wax Museum and got, you know, a letter from that, attended the conference wrestling meet, just happened to run into six former students whose sons were all on the wrestling team. And I attended a junior high basketball game between Currituck County Middle School and Moyoc Middle School. And with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.